Go on, rise for a moment of silence, please.
And Rick, would you read us in the first?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, every God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Crystal, I'm gonna call Roe and you'll show everybody Ron's visible.
Ron's visible. It's really dark. He's driving to Florida, but I see him. He's on there.
And Ron's here, so I'll count him here online.
Rob Dimmitt.
Here.
Ted Metzger. Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Wetstein.
Here.
Okay, first of all, the minutes from December 1 and August the 23th budget session, do we want to do January's also?
Sure.
The same time, January 5. I did get through all of them. In the budget, I didn't find anything. Let's see, what, there were two little minor things, I think in December, that Christine's already corrected, December or January. It was January. Page eight in January 5th meeting, the fifth line, and as I said, Christine's already corrected these on the original ones, it should be Jan instead of Jen Allen. And on page 10, in the seventh line, it says $6,007,430. It should be $6,743, and the number in parentheses is correct. And that's the only ones that I found. So a motion was in order.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
This is for December 1, August 23, and the January 5th meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion by Chris and second by Rick. Okay, any further discussion? Roe call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Dimmitt.
Aye.
Ted Metzger, oh yeah. Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Aye.
So it's six zero. And we have an appointment here that we need to fill for Mike Andreas, who stepped down from the Economic Development Advisory Council, and the Economic Development Advisory Council has made a request on that. Well, this is the wrong one. Who was that? Was that Steve Smith? Thank you. Okay, Rick made a motion for Steve Smith. Are there any other nominations? I'll take a motion since one nomination, the vote by acclamation.
I'll second the way you do that.
Yes, somebody make the motion first, and it's Rick made the motion to vote by acclamation, and Chris is seconded. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's Roe call.
Okay, real fast. Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Dimmitt.
Yes.
Brad Overton. Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Aye.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Six zero. Economic Development Coalition Southwest Indiana Board is non-existent. We made that correction at the last meeting, I believe. We go on to number three, Commissioner Sheriff Business Jail Construction Resolution of Terms, and you have the resolution in front of you, and I'd like to call up our financial advisor and the sheriff and anybody else that's involved with this.
Good afternoon, Sheriff Mike Wilder. I'm not going to talk too long, I'm gonna let Mr. Eckler do most of the speaking, but we did meet last week. Three of the councilmen were present, I believe, Crystal. We've been meeting lots of times, but one of the big discussions was how to afford this, and I think a lot of good things came out of that meeting. Matt was able to come up with some numbers, and Crystal, how we could afford this without changing any of the taxes, but I won't go on much more, I'm gonna let him explain that. Some of the rates have helped us and things, but obviously what we needed was to decide, before, we probably needed a resolution to kind of set the parameters so we could get the project going.
Good evening, council. As mentioned, my name is Matt Eckler. I'm a partner with Baker Tilly out of Indianapolis, and we're the municipal advisor for the county as it pertains to this proposed transaction. Hopefully, all of you have a copy of a preliminary financing analysis that we prepared for discussion tonight, and a couple of things I want to set the table with as we're talking about this is, you know, right now, we're working with an estimated project cost of $57,766,000. I'll let the sheriff and the Garmont team, they can describe better what all goes into that, but basically, it's all the costs except for the costs associated with the financing itself. Another thing I want to emphasize, and this goes to the resolution that will be contemplated here shortly, is that this is a preliminary plan. This is one way to skin the cat, so to speak. As this project process continues, we'll be continuing to provide updates to the council, to the commissioners, to the working group on how this transaction can get done to provide Warwick County with the right amount of money to get the project done with maximum efficiency. So right now, that's what we're looking at, and we had a parameter of not exceeding $4 million of annual payments of relying upon the public safety lit as the primary source of payment, and again, the project funding amount of $57.766 million. So that's the parameters we've been working from. As things change, we'll change with that to address those. You know, one of the things that we've talked about before over the years on different financings is how the market looks at different sources of security. You see myself and colleagues of mine here before, usually talking about TIF and markets use of TIF, and it's similar with income taxes. You know, income taxes are viewed as more volatile because they're more subject to the machinations of the economy. So it's not atypical when you're talking about income taxes similar to TIF to utilize a secondary source of security to give the bond market a little extra comfort that if revenues go down, there's something else backing up to plug the gaps. That's something we've talked a lot about, a lot about in this process. There's been talk of using property taxes, of using edit. I don't think any formal decision has been made. One thing that's important to keep in mind, and I know it's reflected in the resolution, if you do back it with edit, that does tie up your ability to use edit for other financings moving forward. So that's just something to keep in mind, and as we're providing options to this body and the rest of the working group, that's something that we'll make sure we're being clear on those assumptions so you can understand, and then eventually, it's going to be this body's decision on the ultimate structure in terms of source of security to move forward. So having said all of that, I'll dive into the numbers themselves. The cover page is obviously just kind of a summary of everything. Then we've got the illustrative project costs and funding, or the sources and uses of funds, just demonstrating how are you funding that $57.7 million project cost. And you'll see at those top lines, we're contemplating a structure where capitalized interest would not be required, a debt service reserve would not be required, and then you've got to fund the transaction costs themselves. That would include the underwriter, and then also the professional fees associated with the county's financial advisor, bond attorney, local attorneys, all those different parties that come into providing advice to the county on the transaction. In terms of the funding, we're looking at a 54.2 approximately million dollar bond issue. We're assuming it would be a lease structure, which means that you'll fund a building corporation that would actually own the project. The county would make lease payments to the building corporation. The building corporation uses those lease payments to make the bond payments. We are assuming, and this is based on assumptions that have been provided to us by Robert W. Baird, an underwriting firm, that these bonds could be sold at a premium, and what that means is that the coupon interest rates might be higher than the market, but the market would be willing to pay a premium for this. So they might pay you $1.05 for every dollar in bonds, and that generates a premium over the par amount that's actually issued. So that's something we've been seeing commonly in the market with just about every tax exempt municipal deal that I've done in the last, you know, probably five years, really. So there is an assumption of that premium. We're comfortable with that assumption in this context. Based on Crystal's information that she's provided, we're also assuming that there's $1.8 million of county funds on hand that can be put into the project upfront to help fund that overall project size. Important to note that if you increase that cash contribution amount, that's going to reduce the amount of debt that you need to take out to fund the project. Another item that I want to mention that can be part of all of this, and we've had some conversations before on this, is you can also invest these proceeds over the construction period to maximize returns and provide funding as well. So that's something that can be looked at, you know, closer to execution, to see if maybe that can fund part of the project and help offset the amount of debt that you're issuing. But again, so you'll see other key assumptions down there in the footnotes, but I've really covered the main ones. We are assuming that it's payable from the public safety lit with, for this illustration, an additional source of security being your economic development income tax. Again, not married to that by any sense of the word right now, but that's the assumption that's feeding into this now. So we're looking at the next page as being the amortization schedule associated with the $54.26 million bond. You'll see on the far right, the illustrative annual lease rental payments are all at or below $4 million, which was the high end limitation guidance that, again, Crystal had provided in terms of the comfort level of the county being able to absorb that amount. So wanted to make sure that everyone saw that. Again, the assumed interest rates are per Baird, and when you take that premium into account, the all-in true interest cost, as you'll see at the top, is assumed to be about 4.23%. Now, that's based on current market rates with some cushion built in. I'll say that last, just last week, we sold bonds for Whitley County for their jail project. It's about half this amount. They are using a property tax backup up there, and they're doing a 20-year financing, and the true interest cost that we got on that deal was 3.84%. We were really pleased with the results there, and I know that the commissioners and council up there were really pleased as well. So just to give you an idea of where the market is currently for another jail project, obviously, Warwick County will get evaluated on its own financial strengths, and we'll be here to help with that process as well. The final page is simply for reference, we always like to include this when we're talking about these revenue sources, that are revenues rather than property tax revenues, just to show what your revenue history has been, and Warwick County has continually been a strong performer in terms of income tax revenues, as you can see, even when accounting for the calendar hiccups due to the governor's executive orders during the COVID pandemic. You still have very strong performance during those times. With that, I'll stop. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. You'll probably be hearing from, more from me or my colleagues in the coming months as this takes further shape, but wanted to set the table for the conversation tonight and a preliminary plan of finance.
I don't quite understand the reoffering.
Sure. Sure, and it's, it's hard to, I mean, I feel like I'd need a whiteboard to really explain it, but it's basically, you know, the relationship between a bond price and bond yield is inverse. So if they want the higher coupon that's above market, they've got to compensate you for that. So the effective yield will go down to you because they're going to provide you with more money to purchase a 5% coupon, which is what the interest payment is going to be based on, even though the market might be, you know, 384 or 4%. In order to compensate you for them getting that higher return on the money that they're spending to buy the bond, they're going to pay you a premium amount over and above a baseline price to get that bond. So like I said, if it's a dollar of bonds, they're going to pay you $1.05 to get that. And so they're generating more cash for you that offsets the higher interest rate coupon that you'll be paying over time, and it ends up kind of washing out as opposed to if they just said, we're going to pay you 4% a year, and there's no premium or discount on that. I'd be happy to dive into that in more depth, and that's something that we can continue to talk about as this process moves forward, but it's, like I said, kind of standard operating procedure for tax exempt bonds these days. They want the higher returns that are above market, and so they've got to compensate you for that upfront. Yeah, the Whitley County deal I cited last week had, I think, $700,000 of premium in it, so continuing to see it around the market.
Do you know who else is going to speak? Are you the only, I don't, I don't know when to ask a question, honestly. I don't know if you're the right person for me to ask this question of, who else is going to be up here, but I'll just ask.
Okay.
The backup funding from the public safety lit. I know there were some discussions that have been going on about that, and it's a pretty hot topic. Is it required to have any backup at all?
That's a great question.
Give me some examples.
Sure. Like I said before, revenue bonds, and this would be what we call a revenue bond rather than a property tax bond, they are viewed as not as strong by the bond market. So it is very common to put a backup, whether it be property taxes or income taxes, as a supplement to give bondholders and the rating agencies increased comfort that you're going to meet your obligations, that if public safety lit dips, something else is there to fill in the gap. You're in this circumstance here where your public safety lit is actually, it's really strong, and we're looking at $4 million a year of payments versus $9.8 million in revenues. So that's more than two times coverage. And one of the rules of thumb that we all, that we often operate with is with revenue deals, if you've got more than two times coverage, you don't necessarily need a backup revenue source, but it's still kind of a conservative approach to the market. And we're in the process of starting conversations with a rating agency to get some feedback on whether or not that backup source would actually be needed. We're too early to make a definitive statement right now, but we're exploring, if you can get this done without attaching a backup revenue source and still get competitive interest rates, we'll bring that to you, and then, as I mentioned before, the council can make a decision on whether or not they want to attach a backup or not. And we'll set those next to each other, so you can see what that means in dollars and cents.
Now, as basic, my question was, there are possibilities of having no backup source.
It is a possibility. Yeah, typically, you'll have to pay for it, but you're strong enough where we want to seriously explore if you need it.
Maybe, huh?
Yeah, it's a maybe right now. More information to follow, though.
Okay.
And backing up with the property tax, doesn't that take some kind of special regulation or hoop to jump through?
Um, and, you know, unfortunately, Brad Bingham can't be here tonight, and I don't know if Andrew or Cliff wants to speak to the procedural elements. With property taxes as a backup, a couple items to keep in mind is, one, you're limited to 20 years as the term. So the shorter term here, we're looking at, I think, 23 years. So that's long enough to get the payments down to $4 million a year. So that's one limitation. Some of the other kind of hoops to jump through, to use your word, is that you have to demonstrate that the revenue source that's the primary security is reasonably expected to always be there. You have to have sufficient coverage to demonstrate that property taxes are merely there as a marketing add-on to get you stronger rates, stronger rating, and you reasonably expect that you'll never actually have to use that. And once you demonstrate that reasonableness, you're not subject to the rules of a property tax financing where if you're of a project size that exceeds a certain amount, you could be subject to a petition or remonstrance race or a referendum. So that, that's the regulations there. And I know, in terms of the raw procedures, there are some different types of approvals that come in, but it's still ultimately flows through the council.
I did not catch that this was amortized over 23 years. I do like hearing that. That's good. That's, I see now, yeah.
Yeah, we stretched it out to keep to that $4 million maximum, so that becomes...
I thought it was going to be 25, so I'm glad to see the 23.
So, and that's something we'll continue watching, you know, if rates improve, maybe we can shorten it further, or if rates go the other direction, you might have to go longer. But, you know, 25 is kind of the outside, but the aim that we've been tasked with is, you know, keep it as short as you can while keeping within that $4 million.
Will the Fed rate going up affect this much?
That's priced into these assumptions. You know, if they start really raising rates, then that could change the calculus, but we're comfortable with these assumptions with the cushion built in that I mentioned before. You know, if we went to the market tomorrow with this, we'd beat what's on paper here, but in August, who knows where we'll end up. So that's why we have cushion built in.
I don't suppose you have an amortization on what it actually would be today?
I don't have that handy.
That's fine.
But that's something, if at a future meeting you're interested in seeing market versus cushion scenario, we're happy to provide that.
That's okay.
We'd definitely be better.
Anything else, other councilmen? Ron? Ask Ron if he has anything else he wants to add.
Is that an interest rate variable or fixed?
It would be fixed at the time of sale.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't do variable rates for these types of things. I've done maybe two variable rate deals in my 17 years. We try to stay away from those.
Oh, yeah. Good.
You know, I'll say after sitting in or listening in on the call from that last meeting, I mean, I was, it really kind of helped alleviate a lot of my concerns on that phone call from what, from the information, not, you know, not only just the financing, but some other questions that came up as well. So, I mean, I like the direction where we're going with this.
We do have other people presenting other questions. We do have Garmont, Terry, with the commissioner, Andrew, if you do have a question before. And I did want to just explain one thing. I want to thank Matt and Crystal for their hard work, Greg, because we've met with USDA. We took, we looked at a lot of other options of financing, too, and this is probably one of the best, guide us where we need to be and stuff, so I thank you for the hard work they put into, and the people that did take time to listen. But if there is any other questions, we have people here who want to answer your questions, don't invite going home and feel like they've missed something.
I'd like to hear from Steve Rowley. You knew I was going to do that, didn't you, Steve?
Good evening, Steve Rowley, Economic Development. One, I'll start out by saying I am in total support of this project. Anyone that either hears about the sheriff's offices and conditions over there for a department and for those professionals to work, they need quality facilities, and the county needs quality facilities. The one place where economic development has been brought into this are the edit dollars, and I will say that I'm always on Team Warwick County. We've always been in support, whether we need $100,000 for a senior center, or money for 4H, or money to pay the courthouse bond, or the parks bond, or the highway building, zero problem with it. And I will say that Crystal's done a nice job and is really the wizard when it comes to our budgets of understanding where, I think, in the conversation, I wasn't involved in the small teams meetings, but in the conversation where there may be a couple hundred thousand dollars of edit that needs to help get us to that $4 million payment every year, completely in support of that. The courthouse bond is rolling off, and there's a lot of, correct me if I'm wrong, Crystal, but that's about where we're at. The one thing that Matt touched on that I just wanted to bring up, and it's why we've been talking with Brad Bingham and Matt Ecklerly, talked with Cliff and Crystal, to propose just a little language change in this non-binding resolution, which still sticks to your parameters of $4 million and everything else, is just the understanding that if we pledge edit, the pledge doesn't mean the $200,000 that we think we're going to use every year. When you pledge, you know, Matt talked about TIF or whatever, you only have so much bonding capability. And when you start pledging, that's your first commitment. And so it'd be like me taking out a mortgage and going to the bank and trying to get a second mortgage. They'll say, well, you're already committed to funds over here. We can't give you another $200,000 loan. You just maxed out over here. So as we know, economic development gets half of the edit dollars to go to all these different county things that we talked about, plus the economic development budget. Highway Department gets the other half. That is about $4 million, four and a half million. So if we pledge it as, and Matt should correct me if I say anything wrong, if we pledge this as a secondary source, we, the county or economic development, lose that bonding capability. And because the size of this bond at $4 million, it has to still be a backup in bonding capability and payment capability in case something would happen. And so we lose that ability, and what we might lose, if this was a five-year bond like the courthouse, that's five years to plan for, this would lock up that bonding capability from economic development for 23 years. And I don't have a crystal ball. We don't need that bonding capability tomorrow or next year for what we're forecasting. We did do an economic development bond three years ago, so we, we do use this tool, and I was just trying to put some language in there that Matt was comfortable with, that Brad was comfortable with, that Cliff was comfortable with, to still basically allow county council to decide what the secondary sources. But to Chris's point, if we can find a way or a tool or a mechanism where we don't need a backup, it's not so concisely in there that we're going to use that edit capacity, because I don't mind the payment coming out per year. That's not going to handicap the county for doing other projects or the parks or anything else. We take away that bonding capability when the next, now, this is a $50 million project for the jail, when the next $18 million project comes up, whether it's another county building, or whether it's an economic development opportunity, we're tying that, we no longer have that tool. And so our, my purpose is, if we can find another way where county council can still hold all the parameters that you want for this bond, that's the language that's in there, that if another tool or source presents itself to still meet the parameters, we can go with that, and it just doesn't spell out that it's solely and has to be edit as that secondary choice. That's, that's the only change. It's been run by everybody today. We were kind of in this a little last minute because we just kind of got poked on it by, hey, you may want to weigh in on this, just a couple days ago, so we've been trying to get up to speed on it, but that's where we're at. I hope that makes sense.
It does to me, but...
And county council still has the ability to say we're using, we're using edit. It's not doing that, it's just saying... not doing that. It's just saying, if this meeting wasn't for, I want this project to move forward. I want you guys to have a proposal that you can approve tonight so that these guys can get moving and get the land and get everything else done that they need. I don't want to hold them up a day. But I wanted some flexibility because ideally, since we just really got into this last week on Friday, need a few more weeks to kind of flush out if there's some other tools that can either save us some money or save us that bonding capacity so that we don't miss the next opportunity.
So in simple terms, for me, I guess you're saying that economic development supports this resolution, the way it's written. And the reason, one of the reasons we're supporting is because it does not absolutely commit economic development to, as a, I'll call cosigner or alternative source.
It makes it a possibility, not a...
A possibility, not a requirement.
And like you said, if we can find a way to do it without a secondary source, and there are some other tools available that may be able to help us do that, we'd like to entertain that because I think it's the best move for the county, for the way that we use edit. Okay, thanks.
What would the resolution number be, 01?
Just to make sure everybody's clear, this is a different version. I think everybody has the correct version in front of them, a different version than the one that was sent out 10 days ago or so, a week ago.
Yes, I laid the new one on your desk for the seat. Correct.
And I think Chris said this, and I think Steve said this, too. This is not binding on the council in any way. It's just merely showing that you do desire at some point to go through with this, but there is no truly binding nest, for lack of a better word, by passing or adopting this resolution.
There was only one change in section one.
That's correct.
Cliff, I'd like to ask you also to, in section one of the last paragraph, where it says that for the avoidance of doubt, I believe I know what that means, but could you put it into layman's terms for us?
Yeah, and and some of this language was from Brad Bingham, but for that, for the avoidance of doubt, the county's lease rental obligations under the lease shall not be secured by or payable by or from Adviloram property taxes. So this is not a property tax-backed bond.
Okay, and this is just making that crystal clear to everyone?
That's correct.
We're not going to use, okay. That's kind of what I thought. It's also, I guess, prohibiting us from using property taxes.
Well, again, nothing, nothing really prohibits you from doing anything. If you wanted to at the next meeting, you could say, we're going to, Matt doesn't want to do this, but you're going to change the way we want to fund this. I hate to even say that, too. But so the answer to your question is, is no, by passing this resolution would not prohibit you from doing anything. I know, I shouldn't have said that, but I wanted to answer your question accurately.
The words of a wise man once said, we can do a 180.
That's correct.
Let's don't do that.
That's why I could entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-01, a resolution of the County Council of Warwick County, Indiana, in support of the construction and financing of new county sheriff's offices and security center and related improvements upon certain terms and conditions. It's a motion by Brad and second by Chris.
And I'll make a roll call.
I think it was Rick.
Rick, was it? I'm sorry, yes.
Ron Bacon. Rob Dimmitt.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Aye.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Okay, that's 6-0 then.
Thank you, Council.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Have a safe trip back. I wanted to mention here for council members, this time you don't have to go very far, but the 2023 County Council Southwest District Meeting, and this is the first time, to my knowledge, since I've been on this board, which is a long time, that they've actually had a county council district meeting. The AIC has district meetings in the spring. But this is a chance to get together with other councilmen in the southwest Indiana area. It's at the Huntingburg Event Center. That's that new building that's just north of the downtown area on the left. It's Wednesday, February the 22nd, at 4:30 our time. It's 5:30 Eastern Standard Time. And that's February the 22nd, 4:30 our time. And the cost for council members is $45. It includes dinner, but the $45 registration fee can run through our, it's not a state called meeting, so it'll be through our travel. But it's the Indiana County Council's Association, where it's council members only. And the agenda presentations will be, the top priority is going to be proposed legislation. And there's a whole lot going on up there right now that some of it could affect us locally and our revenue locally. Sometimes our legislators don't remember that we've got to produce funds for our programs here locally. But it's got a list here, Community Mental Health Center funding, transformational criminal justice reform, motor vehicle highway, percentage restricted and unrestricted funds will be discussed, Public Health Commission, local income tax, probation, and residential property tax release, relief. All that stuff will be discussed, so.
How long is that meeting?
It lasts about an hour and a half. You know, dinner's about a half hour, and the meeting's about an hour. And then the, what I call the meat of the meeting is when, a lot of times after they've had their meeting, we'll sit around and talk with other council members and see how they're doing. And we can talk to that. Like DuBois County, just they just built a jail, built onto their jail, and Gibson County's building a jail. So there's some people going through same things we are. Okay, next up is the handbook policy reimbursements, transfers, or corrections that we can handle all at once. I'm going to read them. The additional appropriation, it's a reimbursement for cumulative drain, contractual, $12,445. The additional appropriation for longevity, auditor, first deputy, $2,250. Additional appropriation longevity, EMA, administrative assistant, $750. Salary ordinance, handbook policy, leaving employment. It is Superior Court Two, isn't it?
Superior Court One.
Okay. Superior Court One. Eighty hours of PTO paid time off, $1,726.40. The additional will be added at the March meeting. Salary ordinance handbook policy, retirement, courthouse, 58.6 hours of PTO paid time off, $1,023.51. Was there anything else added just recent?
I'll do those at the end, but then the Sheriff's Commissary Report.
The Sheriff's Commissary Report, all we do is review that and look at that. I've looked it over, and they're doing a great job out there. Also, you received, at least I did, I think you did, too, a report that the sheriff has to give to the judges on the condition of the jail and the things going on out at the jail. And I found that really very, very good to help go along with our jail construction that we're looking into. So I'll call for a motion, and then roll call, for A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Motion to approve those items.
Second.
Motion by Brad and second by Rick.
Yes.
Roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Yes.
Rob Dimmitt.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Aye.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
And then, under council business, the budget meeting dates.
So I, this is a little bit early, but if you need time to look at them, you certainly can. But I didn't know if anyone had any conflicts when I, while I start scheduling these.
I don't have any big conflicts, but you chose two big dates for me.
Uh-oh.
August 29 is my wife and I's 53rd anniversary.
Congratulations.
Well, if any consolation, we typically...
I'm sorry, August 22nd. There we go. I put it on the wrong line. I'm reading. I knew that. That's the 5:00 PM budget session. That's the one where we actually look at the budget and pare it down. And then my birthday's the regular meeting, but I won't miss the regular meeting.
Just wanted to get that in the minutes.
I wanted to get that in the minutes.
All right, so that looks okay, everyone. Okay. We have two transfers turned in that I would love to get addressed tonight. One is in the Public Safety Fund. It is before you. It is from Motorized Equipment EMS ambulance to Contractual Services EMS. And this will pay for the contract for the remainder of the year, and the amount is $333,333.34.
Okay, that's the Public Safety Fund from Motorized Equipment to Contractual Services or EMS. Okay, transfer of $333,333.34. Why doesn't that, why wouldn't that be 33 cents? There would be all 3 cents. Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Chris, is there a second?
I'll... I'll second, yeah.
Okay.
No confusion this week.
Roll call, Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Dimmitt.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Aye.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
6-0.
We had another transfer. I laid it before you, the explanation. It is in cum drain from contractual services to gasoline and lube, so $1,424.95.
So from cum drain, contractual services, from contractual services to gas, oil, and lube. And the amount again was how much? Okay. Motion is in line.
I'll make a motion.
Rob makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad. In discussion. Roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Dimmitt.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Aye.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Okay, was there any other business to come before us?
I have something I would like to bring up, and I typically don't do this, so bear with me. I have a conflict for the June meeting. My daughter is graduating her doctorate in Arizona, and I really want to be on attendance.
Congratulations.
So I was hoping we could either delay the meeting a week, if you guys want me to be here, you know, but I would like to be here.
What's your name?
So I was, I was thinking June 8, but I think Ron sent an email that making it June 6. So June 6 is a Tuesday, June 8 is a Thursday.
Ask Ron if he wants to make a motion.
Ron, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for June 6. I have a conflict on June 8.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Ron made the motion for June the 6th. It's Tuesday instead of our June 1st meeting.
Correct.
Let me write all this down. That'll be at regular time, 6 o'clock. And it was seconded by Rob.
Yes. As long as we have extra reminders.
I will. Don't worry.
That's her birthday, I know, right, Mike? Right before.
Okay, we'll vote on this motion. First, is M.I. want to discuss it? Okay, all those, roll call.
Roll call. Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Dimmitt.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
No.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
So 5 and 1, and Rick Reed. Did you have another conflict for that Tuesday?
No, that's, I just want to keep on Thursdays.
Thursdays, yeah.
It's easier on all people to remember that.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, anything else to come before us?
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Oh, roll call.
Oh, gosh.
To adjourn.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Yes.
Bye, Ron.
Safe travels.